Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. St. Louis Park Independent School Board Committee School Board Meeting on Monday, January 27, 2020. First up, we have...
Open forum. Do we have anyone here to speak this evening at open forum? Seeing no one, we can move on, but I just did want to remind folks in terms of how to communicate with those of us on the school board. These open forums, which are held at the second meeting of the month, so the fourth Monday of the month, beginning at 7:00 PM, is a great opportunity to come and share anything with the board. You would be able to speak for three minutes on most any topic that you want. There's some limitations there, but that is one option in how to communicate with us. The other ways to communicate with the board would include listening sessions. Those opportunities are a little bit more conversational. There's two or three board members that attend, and there is an opportunity to actually have a little bit more back and forth than we're actually able to have here at open forum. And I wanted to announce the dates of those listening sessions because they have been scheduled. We usually have about three a year. The next one is going to be held on Saturday, February 29th, at 10:00 AM. And we're going to do that in the high school here in this building, in the new offices, in the conference room there. And then the final one for this school year will be on Wednesday, April 29th. Board members, you all want to make, take note of this since we just decided these dates. Wednesday, April 29th, that's going to be at 6:30 PM in Aquila, probably the media center at Aquila, or at least starting there. And then you can also email any of us at any time, any of us, all of us at the same time. Our email addresses are available on the district's website. And then finally, you can also call the school board voicemail. That phone number is (952) 928-6040. We get a notification of that voicemail, and then there will be a board member who will be getting back to you within 72 hours or so. So feel free to get in touch with us about any concerns that you have at any time. Okay. Okay. Now, we need to approve the agenda for this evening. So first up, we will have superintendent's report. Next, discussion items include the 2021-2022 calendar review, construction update and bid awards, budget update for the five-year projection model of the budget, policy development, first reading of policy 437, staff participation in political activities, second reading of policy 640, acceleration of students. Then we will have our consent agenda. The action agenda includes the bid award board approval of the bid award, and then communications and transmittals. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So moved? Moved by Ann, second by Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 7-0. Okay, first up Superintendent Osai.
Good evening, Chair Tombeck, members of the board. This evening for my superintendent's report, I would like to highlight a couple of items. One, I would like to start off by congratulating Mr. Miskowski. Mr. John Miskowski was recently named one of 134 candidates for the 2020 Minnesota Teacher of the Year Award. As you all are aware, Mr. Miskowski and even last year, Steve Schmitz was one of our finalists for the Minnesota Teacher of the Year. So we're extremely excited that our teachers are being recognized for all of their hard work and efforts. On Sunday, May 30th, at the St. Paul River Center, there will be an event in which a 25-member panel of community leaders will name a group of semifinalists and finalists. So we're keeping our fingers crossed and rooting that Mr. Miskowski will be one of those semifinalists and finalists. Up next, I would like to congratulate Ms. Kara Sisko. I learned this morning that Ms. Kara Sisko was named Minnesota Council for the Social Studies High School Teacher of the Year. So she will be acknowledged on Sunday, March 1st, at the Mankato Civic Center. The event will take place from 5:00 to 8:00, and at that time, she'll be recognized for her excellence and contribution to social studies education. So if you see Ms. Sisko or Mr. Miskowski, please congratulate them on their accomplishments. And you know, the thing that just makes me most excited about both of these recognitions and even all of our staff that aren't being recognized is that we have a tremendous group of adults that come here to St. Louis Park Public Schools every single day and positively impact the lives of our students. And the last thing I would just like to mention as a part of my report this evening is the upcoming Children First Champion Breakfast. And that will be held on Thursday, March 5th, at the Doubletree. And for more information, you can go to the Children First website at www.children-first.org. And our very own Sarah Thompson will be the chair for the breakfast this year, so I'm excited. It's going to be the best ever. Sarah's going to, no pressure. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Osai. All right, first up, we have the everyone's favorite discussion, calendars! Yay! Okay, Rick Cryer, Director of Human Resources, fearless leader of all calendar discussions.
Superintendent was here with me last time, I know.
I see we're going for the safety in numbers approach tonight.
Please stand next to me. Yeah, no. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent, thanks for your support. We, you know, we're always trying to get this right, and it always moves around, things change. We met with our, with a larger group from the teachers, so the Park Association of Teachers, and they put together a larger calendar committee and then sent out a survey to their members saying, you know, hey, we talk about this every year, and can we get some actual data? And so they surveyed their data, or surveyed their members, and actually, you know, pretty good response, 235 responses out of about 260 people. So the highlights from their survey, according to teachers, when asked, thinking of both, thinking about both students and staff, how important is having a full two-week winter break? And that was overwhelmingly their number-one takeaway. Their largest data point was, we believe it's important. There were comments around with many students, absent those two days back, it's hard to get into routines, travel abroad for students and teachers, staff and students need time, and spend with family. And then, so that was one of their highest data points in their survey, thinking about both students and staff, how important is having a two-day versus a one-day MEA break. They had 132 people say that that was important to them out of the 235. And so comments about allowing older students to go on college visits, staff members who are parents taking their kids on college visits, traditions, past, you know, practices of just getting out and doing a fall thing in Minnesota before the winter, well-timed rejuvenation for staff and students. The superintendent also met with students.
Good evening, Chair Tombeck, members of the board. I had an opportunity last week to meet with approximately 40 students ranging in grades five through 12, and shared with them the different calendar drafts to get their feedback. And high-level feedback, they wanted to prioritize a longer winter break. They didn't specifically say two weeks, but as they were looking at, they didn't want the school year to go longer, but they wanted a longer winter break, and they felt that they would, you know, the theme was that they would give up MEA if they had to, recognizing that a longer winter break would be more beneficial for them. They felt like the timing of MEA, it came so early, they were just getting started, but they felt like having a longer winter break was much needed after having been in school for a couple of months. And as I mentioned before, they were committed to having the school year end as early as possible. I would also say that they were very supportive of and felt really proud to be in a school district that recognized students' religions and made efforts to modify calendars to support that. So that came up by every group. We were, we had, Laura and I were there, I think we had four or five different groups of students, tables, and each table was really supportive of starting later in '21, '22 to accommodate the Jewish holiday at the beginning of the school year.
Thank you, Superintendent. Let me just see here where, oh, so this, did you, I just want to see if you, nope. I wasn't sure if you put any of the survey slides. Okay, yeah. So the, the, so in looking at the data from the teachers, they also then said getting out early was less critical than some of these other priorities. And so if they had, if they had to prioritize going later into June was better than having a, you know, a shortened winter break period. So we're going to give the board three options to look at, and I'll try to walk you through what these three options look at. And ultimately, we're going to come back and ask you to vote on something, but I don't believe we're going to ask tonight because we want to chance, we haven't, while we have this feedback from the teachers, we haven't had a chance to circle back and talk with parents or anyone else. So this is coming to you first, and then we're going to go out before our next board meeting and come back again. So in what we would consider to be option A, this would be the, I would say, the simplest change. If we can't have a two-week break and we don't want to go longer, could we take the PD day that was on December 3rd and put it the Monday of opening week? Because remember, this option, like all the options we're going to talk about tonight, starts on the Wednesday after Labor Day, and our, and to keep all of our parameters, we were going to have our opening session with teachers start on Tuesday and run through Tuesday, and then the first day of school would be Wednesday, right? So they said, well, if we're going to have a PD day in December, couldn't we just have a six-day opening week, which would include that, whatever PD we were going to get on December 3rd, could we get that on the opening week? And we said, that would then allow us to have a one-day longer winter break, so it, you know, it didn't just hit Thursday and Friday and out the door, and then back on the Monday after New Year's. The one thing I was, just for people who watch this kind of stuff, if Labor Day, or excuse me, if New Year's Day falls on Sunday, then Monday is the federal holiday and we can't hold school. New Year's Day is on Saturday, so the federal holiday is Friday, so that works for us to then come back on Monday after. So it's all those little things that we can't, we got to watch when we're building the calendars.
And I'm sorry, Rick, to interrupt, but I just want to clarify for viewers at home that the reason that you said that all of these options are starting on Wednesday, the 8th, is just to remind folks that Tuesday, the 7th, is Rosh Hashanah.
It's the first day of Rosh Hashanah, which is, you know, as we look back at student and staff absences to observe that religious holiday, you know, and then having students have, you know, the chance to get off to a good start on the first day, you know, we wanted to bring the board an option that would accommodate that and start school on Wednesday.
Right. That discussion is with us before, it's important as well, so.
Yep, good.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, that's why we're talking about starting on the 8th.
Right. So draft A starts on, starts on Wednesday, gets out on the 10th of June, moves the December 3rd PD day to Monday, the 30th of August, and that's about as simple as it gets. I'm going to, I'm going to jump over B because I would say B might be the nuclear option, but I'm going to go B, C. Okay, so option C is almost as simple in nature. It takes the, it takes the winter break and makes it a 10-day winter break. Because we're going to have a 10-day winter break, they also recommended taking that same December 3rd PD day and putting it into the first week, so it didn't, you know, we didn't have a Friday, and then two weeks later, we're out for two weeks, so that, okay if we're going to do that. And then no other changes, and that pushes the end of school for students from the 10th to the 15th. So again, equally as simple, you can just have a longer winter break and get out later at the end. Okay? That's option C. Option B, I said it's the, you know, it's the most change possible to achieve two bookend desires. If you want to have a two-week winter break and you want to get out on June 10th, you would have to take that December 3rd PD day, move it to August 30th, just like we did before. We would have to hold school on Martin Luther King Day, and then hopefully have curriculum around, you know, racial equity and, you know, cultural awareness and, you know, the curriculum that we're developing in the school. So that would have to be, you know, a day. And in Minnesota, if you do hold school on Martin Luther King Day, you must dedicate at least one class period to racial observances. So, yep, yep, we were looking at, well, we'd probably do more than the minimum one there. And then you'd have to take the March 4th PD day and move it and hold school on President's Day. So there's a lot of moving parts there. You'd have, you'd be holding school on two holidays, moving PD days around, but that would be another, you know, on paper, you could have a calendar that worked and got out on June and had a two-week winter break, if those were priorities.
Not to be more difficult and introduce a D.
D?
D.
Love D.
Hypothetically speaking, I heard, I'm hearing from you, if the teachers and the two, they had to choose between MEA and the two weeks at Christmas. Is that?
Both teachers and, both students and teachers said the two-week winter break was, you know, important.
I already won. Okay. Would it be possible to go to a day MEA, say just take the Friday of MEA off, and keep kids out of school on okay day or President's Day? Swap one of those days?
Um, yeah.
Did I just make you really mad?
No, 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 no. Anything's possible. We're questioning, you know, what would staff attendance be on that day? And it might be because they have students of their own who are out and childcare issues that that creates for them, not because of us, but because their school is out on both of those days. And...
Risk.
Not actually having enough kids or...
So that's, that's one of the, it's an untested unknown that we don't know. And so I just, if we did it, we would, no, we would have to understand that we were going in with a little untested territory.
But that's important, even, you know, mind about that option, that it's not just as simple as taking one of those days.
A lot of moving parts.
Right. I think, I think we would, you know, that would be one of those things where, you know, as the Minnesota School Boards Association and Metro superintendents and school boards come together and say, you know, why are we, you know, why are we having these two days off when the Education Minnesota doesn't really have a conference for two days anyway? And, you know, what educational purpose does this serve, and is it good for kids? But those are all, when one, when one district does something in isolation of all the surrounding districts, it, you know, it can have that consequence.
Do you know if there are other surrounding districts that are also moving the start date to this Wednesday? Or is St. Louis Park the only district right now that is looking at this for the Rosh Hashanah beginning?
Oh, I knew that answer the last school board meeting. I was asked that question, and I, we did get information. I thought that one or more districts around us to the west were doing like a PD day that day, or they were, but I, I'll come back and, Branson?
I looked up the Hopkins calendar today because I was curious about that question, and they are actually having, they're starting school a week early. They're starting, starting school before Labor Day because Labor Day is so late in this calendar, so that, I think they were holding school that day, but it wouldn't be the first day of school. And that was how they were preserving the, a two-week break with that late Labor Day start, so.
And that's not an option for us?
That's not on the, right.
We were told by both Mr. Bravo and Mr. Marble that, you know, and, and Mr. Marble would say, even if Mr. Bravo can get all the construction done, then that leaves us no time to hook up all the technology and have a successful start.
I hear you saying this is the Tom's fault.
No, no. This is just a, yeah, summer in Minnesota construction. I mean, we have, we're blessed by the opportunity to do the construction, and they just need time to get the construction done, you know.
I gave you your out right there.
No, I'm not going to do it to them. No, I'm not.
Of course, of course, I kid. All right, Ann.
On that same note, though, the following summer, is that going to be a construction summer? And is getting out as late as June 15th going to be problematic for that following year?
If you may, I, because I can't, I can't recall that off. Yeah. I believe we're more than...
Chair Tombeck, school board members, Superintendent Osai, yeah. Because that following summer is when high school starts projects. So we would have to kind of look, Tom Marble and I would have to kind of look to see what we could actually accomplish and get done in a short summer, because summer school really does take up a lot. And as you all know, that summer school, or summer in any district is really not three months. It's about two months and a week. And so we have to kind of look at it. So I really can't answer it wholeheartedly that will impact it. Starting later will, will make it difficult for us to try to figure out how to get the summer work done.
So Tom, I'm sorry. This is the '21-'22 calendar, so not, next summer, this is to, summer of '22.
Right. Is that when the high school?
That's summer of '21.
Okay, so I'm trying to think now. Middle school will go this summer, and through the, through the spring of next '21, and then the high school does start '21, '22.
So this is the summer of '22.
Oh, '22. We should be done.
See? I thought we were clear, but...
My mistake. I am so sorry.
No, that's a great, that's great.
Thank you, Esther. Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that piece? Just because it, I think that in another year, in a different year where we weren't seeing construction, I think we would maybe put a before Labor Day start on the table. This is, it's not on the table for this particular year, but this is the last year that that wouldn't be an option, and that we're really constrained by that, that summer's construction schedule. So I want to, I just want to, you know, make it known that if we're, if we're, if we are going back to that, the less than two-week winter break, even if we don't want to have to do that, this, this could poss, would probably be the last year we would sort of have to do that.
So on option B, where we're taking out Martin Luther King's Day and President's Day. So we would probably have that same issue with teachers from, with their kids going to other districts, going, or not going to school, and they have to come here to go to school. We'd probably have that same situation.
That's a good point, yes.
And I would highly vote against having that class on Martin Luther King's Day. I just would.
Yep.
I mean, even if we had the whole day on racial equity or Black History or anything like that, I'd still would say, no, let's not do it.
Yeah, and that, and that was one of those where we said that before we would come back, we would want to go back to students and the, you know, the racial equity instructional coaches and, and, you know, might have sounded good, you know, in a meeting or a survey, but, you know, let's, let's unpack that deeper.
Thank you. I, I think I have a series of questions, but I think they're quick ones. So June 15th of that year, we would, you were telling me that all the construction would be done, so we would have air conditioning in all of our buildings through June 15th?
All projects are done, we will have air conditioning.
Okay, very good. One of my other questions was about PD is professional development days, right? And we are obligated by contract to have those at certain times, or is that something that we negotiate with the, with the teach, with the different groups, or?
No, we, you know, we have a contract that says teachers work 185 days, right? And so we can have as many or as few professional development days as, you know, the district determines. So, so no, we don't, we're not bound by contract to have days, you know, a certain number of professional development days, and they certainly aren't on certain days.
And then I think maybe this, this question has been asked before, but are we seeing other districts looking at that two-week Christmas or holiday break, winter break kind of thing, and playing with that? Or is this something unique that we've been doing lately?
You know, I would say 20 years ago, it was the norm. And because of a lot of reasons, I would say, you know, over the years, that's changed, it's changed more than it stayed the same. About the only time that you'll see almost everybody have a two-week break is like when the, the Christmas holiday falls on a Wednesday. It's right in the middle of the week, and it's hard to do anything on either side of that, and, you know, you're not going to have kids come back or, you know, for one day, on, you know, come on a Monday, then you have Tuesday through Thursday off, or come, you know. So that one, it almost always ends up, you deal with it, and you have a two-week break. If the Christmas and New Year's holiday fall on a Monday, you know, then it becomes like, why aren't those students back in school by the end of that second week? And I would say when it, when both the Christmas holiday and the New Year's holiday falls on Friday, there's more tolerance for getting out the week before, you know, the Christmas than, than staying after New Year's. And so I, you know, I think that's about what we see in other groups, that it'll flex based on when the holidays fall. And the earlier they are towards Monday, the more likely kids come back sooner.
I just, regardless of what happens, as a teacher, I would just say, commend you for taking the time to listen to what the teachers have to say, to pay attention to the feedback that they've given you, and to make three copies of a calendar, like I've never seen this before. I just, I really think it's really respectful, and it shows a lot of value that you place in what your teachers think and do. So thank you.
Yeah. You missed the first three before you got here, so this is actually, we, this is actually five, six, and seven, yeah.
Bravo.
Bravo.
A few questions, and one of these might not obviously be answered by the board. It would maybe go to the superintendent or the people that run PD. Have we, has the option been thrown around of an online PD that could satisfy one of those PD days? I know that there's Schoology, there could be modules put in, and teachers could work, you know, outside of their contract to get those hours?
I'll start, and then you finish up. I would, you know, we do some online PD, you know, through our, you know, the, some of the things we do, bloodborne pathogens and bullying policies and harassment policy, and those, all, those things are done online to, you know, I would say expedite and make them doable when people can fit them into their schedules. The PD we're talking about here is really about getting together, work, looking at data, working on things together. So I think this would be harder to do and maybe less meaningful. The teachers have always felt some of the greatest PD is when we can get together and work, so.
Yeah, and just to add to that, so to answer your question, yes, we've thought about that, and actually, the summer, not this upcoming summer, but next summer, we're going to have to come up with a creative way to do our back-to-school kickoff, because at that time, our, how, our, our high school auditorium won't be available to us, which is the place that we bring all of our staff back. So we're certainly looking at, you know, video and other modules to engage and really get our staff connected around our strategic direction. So one of the...
So one of the, the reasons for bringing staff together, as you all are aware, is that when you have a clearly articulated strategic plan, in order to have staff internalize that and see how it shows up in their daily work, it's important to bring them together and provide context and development around that, so that it didn't impacts the lives of our students. So we're currently exploring what our options are going to be. Regardless of if we have the days available or not, we're going to have some space constraints coming up here, summer of 21.
Well, this is super clear. Doesn't seem like there are any perfect options. I think that I can speak for, years ago, we heard from parents when we didn't have school on the couple Thursday and Friday of winter break because they felt that their students were better off in school than they were sitting in kids' place or sitting home while their families had to go back to work. So that is a consideration. And I think that's why, one of the reasons that we took into account when we made, when we shortened the winter break, but obviously this year, we heard from families who, and teachers, obviously, who, you know, whose travel plans were disrupted, lots of kids were absent. So if that doesn't tell us that there's no perfect way to do this, you know, I don't, I don't know what does. One of the things that I will highlight that I'd like about all of these options, too, is by taking, by moving a couple of those PD days, we have a little bit more consistency around Fridays and being in school on Fridays, not as many missed Fridays. I heard from someone who reached out to me this past week on behalf of a group of parents who were concerned about the number of Fridays, especially in these first couple of months of the year, like December, January, February, of how many Fridays kids are out of school. And one note that I wanted to mention, and this seems right to add it now, is about how maybe we can better communicate, either on the calendar or on the website, exactly what those dates are for. To specifically call out on the community calendar and on the school website, end of semester grading. Or, I mean, we do so for conferences, but we don't call out professional development day and we don't call out end of semester grading or end of quarter grading days. So I think that that's something that we should consider, just to be a little bit more transparent about why our students are home those days. So when is it that you want to know, when are we going to be adopting a calendar?
Yeah. With, you know, assuming we can get all the, the work we need to do between now and then, we'd like to bring it back to the first meeting in February.
Okay. So what I would like to ask of our board is that we go out to our schools, maybe send a note to the PTOs at the schools, maybe they could communicate with each site. But we really, because in particular, this is such a complex issue and, and we're going to hear from families, we're going to hear from families with whatever calendar we end up adopting, I would like to hear from as many families as possible now. And so D-PAC, our site council, our PTOs, for anybody who's watching this, please, this is the perfect time to email us or to leave a voicemail on our message line. We would just really value families' input on this issue. On all issues, but this one in particular. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Mr. Bravo, who I mercilessly fed to the wolves on the whole calendar thing.
He did it. Chair Tombach, Superintendent O'Sai, and School Board members, I want to talk to you today about a couple of things, construction update, of course, and bid awards. And then just getting some information to you about the latest requirements that we received from the Minnehaha Creek Watershed Division and so forth on our projects. So as you may or may not know, when we apply for permits, we have several regulatory agencies that we have to get approval from. The city, the state, you know, the plumbing division, many, many regulatory agencies. And one of them, of course, is the Minnehaha Creek Watershed Division. And in the last round that we did, because we wanted to submit for this summer's track project, and the track project, if you don't know about that one, is that our track is, is started to fail. It's been there for many years. The gaps are starting to get bigger and bigger. There's some concerns about, you know, issues of kids' safety and things like that. So we submitted our plans to all the regulatory agencies. And the one that came back to us that said, hey, timeout, was the Minnehaha Creek Watershed Division. Not blaming them, not because they do have requirements that we have to follow and so forth. And one of the things that they require that we didn't know about until we submitted this last one was all landowners must not exceed 40% disturbed land on current or future growth or expansion. What that means more or less is you can't go in and plow down land because what they're concerned about is the phosphorus levels and things like that and how water's going to be retained and things. So there's a requirement, and they dated back all the way to 2005. Now, we would probably never, would never have encountered this requirement unless we submitted our plans. But it kind of helped us also to plan for the future. So what that means more or less in today's items is that all our projects that we're doing at the high school, minus the track project and so forth, was about 40.1% disturbance of new construction. And that's why the CUP for the big referendum project of the high school, the new additions, the parking lot, things like that, we met it. We didn't, we didn't know that there was another requirement on that. But moving forward, if we don't take action moving forward is, we're pretty much done with any high school expansion or high school work on the site itself. Because anything we do beyond what we, what we've been approved to do in the referendum cannot be done, just because we're going to have to do land disturbance. And land disturbance means that example would be the high jump or the, the area next to the fieldhouse, if we decide that we want to do something different or something like that, you cannot do any more expansion to the site unless you've, you meet the new requirements of the Minnehaha Creek Watershed Division. And what we're going to, what we're going to explain to you is, it's not something new. City of St. Louis Park does what we're, what they said that we should be looking at or considering. A lot of other districts do it. We talked to somebody just the other day that said, yeah, we had to do it, too, in our parking lot. So what I'm at, what I'm saying is moving, it's critical for us to kind of look at how do we plan for the future. So what they have asked us is to develop a three- to five-year plan to add underground water tanks to sites that right now are at the 40% or even maybe exceeding. And underground water tanks is just pretty much what it is. It's an underground tank that stores the rainwater and things like that for phosphorus and so, until it can equally distribute out into the lower parts of the soils and so forth. And that's what Minnehaha Watershed has said, a lot of people are, that are required to do that. We're at the point right now that we should start considering it because of the fact that we are going to be landlocked. We are a district that's surrounded by other cities that, you know, we don't have a lot of land in this district. So that's, that's, that's one of the things that they're asking. And this will then satisfy the high school's future growth. Because, you know, I think we, we all can say that, you know, we're done now with construction because who knows what's going to happen five years, 10 years from now? And we will not be able to do any, any work at the high school unless, you know, we get some type of a variance or something like that, which the Minnehahs has said, this is something that is in place through the state and everybody has to follow these guidelines. Yes?
So this is kind of, we talked about it briefly a couple of weeks ago. But, well, my first question is, while we're digging up the football field, the practice field, putting turf, could we put the tanks under there? And would that satisfy their needs?
I, yeah, I mean, that is one spot that we did look at. It's not a, the best place. I mean, the best place to put it is where you know that if something wants to happen, you're not going to destroy something big like a, like a turf area. So 90% of the people put it underneath a parking lot where you can get a manhole cover and everything else and you can watch it and monitor it. And that's what be, that would be my recommendation, since we are going to rip up the parking lot to put buses into the parking lot and moving the students around. That is the best time to do it, is when we are actually ripping up the high school. And economies of scale says if you do it at that time, which is two years from now, two, three years from now, you're going to, you're going to gain the benefit of the cost.
Yep. The other question is really for St. Louis Park homeowners, and we're on these small lots anyway, most of the houses are, you really have to just work inside of your foundation then, right? Or is this for?
Pretty much. You just, you could remodel inside, but you can't do anything outside. Maybe they want to do a discovery garden, you know, or sidewalks or anything else. That disturbs the land. And they said, once you pass the 40% and you don't have this in place, you're already pretty much stuck.
One of the things, I, I sat on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District.
Okay. So you know it.
For a number of years. And one of the things that we did when we were on there, we were actually reviewing a lot of plans. We had a grant program and some things like that, that we would do. And so there are some other options like rain gardens and things like that, that some people can do with storm runoff to help manage that water that's coming through. But I'm assuming that's something like here at the schools, you start to become challenged just by sheer surface area and then usable outdoor space. So you need, you need something that can actually pull it off when it's coming off the top of the roofs and coming out of the parking lots and things like that. That's some of our challenges here.
You're right, it is. And we did ask about the rain gardens and so forth, and they, they kind of shied away from that now, they're saying, because it doesn't keep it, store it where tanks do. But you're right, we did, we did bring up rain gardens and other types of ponds, holding ponds.
But that's an option sometimes for homeowners and people like that, that if you're talking smaller things or having surfaces that are permeable and things like that, that can help manage runoff is another option, too. So.
Yeah. So what we're saying more or less is that, you know, we would like to develop a three- to five-year plan based off of this, for this, for the school district, so that it can expand in the future. Okay. So I wanted to just kind of give you an overview of the site. This is how the Minnehaha Creek Watershed Division looks at it. And how pretty much the high school land is being used up quite a bit. And by doing the track and even the turf, if we decide to do that, it's going to well over exceed 40%. And these are just some of the numbers. So I want to talk now about the bid awards. These are the last two projects that went out for bid, Susan Lindgren Elementary and Peter Hobart Elementary for this, this coming up summer. When we're, when these projects are done, we have fulfilled the agreement of the referendum of all the elementary classrooms upgraded and remodeled with new furniture, sustainable design, energy-efficient equipment, and just kind of looking at it to 21st century learning. So we went out for bid. One of the biggest things that we, you know, have a challenge now is just because of the fact that last referendum that was approved last November was another billion dollars for many school districts. So now we're competing with many, many school districts, and there's about $2.8 billion worth of construction out there. So, you know, contractors can pick and choose what they want to go and where they want to go and things like that. So we were, we're very concerned. We bid out early. We, we did everything we could on this. We heard from the contractors that were here, said, yeah, these, this is the only last ones that we're going to bid on because our plates are full. And we're just fortunate that we did get some bidders on our last two projects here. So our budget was 5.79 million. Susan Lindgren had three bidders, and the qualified low bidder was Construction Results with a bid of 2.653 million. It had 12.7 SBE, MBE, and WB, because that's something we take pride in, in looking at the business. And it had 82.5% union workforce. So we're very, very happy about that because it kind of gels with, and with all the other projects that were out for bid that we're going to be doing. Peter Hobart had only two bidders, and the qualified low bidder was Eber Construction. Eber Construction had a bid of 3,135,900. The qualified bidder had met all the qualifications that this district put in place, and we had reviewed by the architects and engineers, which felt that Eber Construction met the guidelines that we had in place here in this district. They only had a 5% SBE, MBE, and WB, and they're only 10% union workforce. So that, that was lower than what we want to have in, in what we, what we've seen throughout the last couple of years, but they did meet the qualifications. So they will have to pay prevailing wages because that's just how we set it up. But they are a company that other school districts around us, we asked, they are using Eber Construction also. So they, they felt it was a contractor that would do the work for us. So in summary, we, if you add them both up, we're about $1,000 under budget. So we, we did a good estimate, I truly believe. I want people to know that it's not $1,000 left to whatever contingent, we do have a contingency. We have money set aside for unforeseeables because we know things do happen and so forth. But this is about the closest that I think we can, we can say we did a good job on, on the numbers bidding. So we would like to ask the, the school board to approve the bid awards of the last two projects for the summer, so that we can start getting contracts developed and start ordering materials. Yep.
Well, it's disappointing that we didn't get that goal of ours for, for this one. But given that there's such a high demand in construction coming up, and there's a high demand in people to work in construction, which is a different subject that I'd like to talk about. But, so, you know, we're getting there at the, what we had predicted for a budget for the project, and it's going to work. And then our numbers overall will work out to our benefit. But, yeah, it's, nice job.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Tom, I just wanted to clarify two of these bids, these alternates. There's about nine for Susan, Peter Hobart, and about the same amount for Susan Lindgren. So that, those comprise a little bit of our wiggle room? If there are contingencies that need to be?
Yeah. The reason why we put alternates in, and there's alternates on all the projects we do, is it's because my commitment to this district was that, you know, the referendum, the way it was explained, is that we were going to do, do the classrooms. But the things that, you know, as we did Aquila and PSI, there's special ed classrooms, there's other types of classrooms that were not in the mix. But yet we felt that because they're classrooms, they needed to be part of some type of alternate. And what we've been fortunate is that by putting them in there, we met the, we met the bid. But if we had an issue where they were over budget, we can now then go back and say, okay, these, these weren't fully in the referendum, but they are classrooms, they are considered classrooms. So we just need, then we could come back and justify why we, we needed these alternates or not have the alternates. So we, I wanted to make sure that our projects were going to be successful on all ends of it. There are some things that people did request as we start planning it that didn't meet the qualifications. And, you know, they were concerned about it, but we felt that these alternates here were justifiable because they were part of classrooms. So that's why, but thank you. Yeah.
Well, I would certainly say that I would be uncomfortable if we were not attending to our special education classrooms, our intervention classrooms, because our students are spending time in those as well.
Correct.
So they are classrooms, as you said. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. Patricia Magnuson, Director of Business Services, will present an update on the five-year budget projection model.
Good evening, Chair Tombach, Superintendent O'Sai, and members of the board. We're going to do a brief update for the board, for our budget planning for next year, so that we can continue our work preparing for fiscal year 21's budget. We just spent an hour together prior to the board meeting, reviewing all of the documents that are in the board packet in detail. This PowerPoint summarizes some of the high points. There's no action requested of the board tonight, but it's just preparation so that we can continue our planning. This visual is an overview of the budget process. There's a detailed budget timeline in the materials, but this is something we've been working on with. But this is something we've been working on with Finance Advisory Committee that shows that everything about our budget is connected to our strategic plan and specifically centers around student learning. That all of the actions that we take and as we know where we spend our money is, are the things that we care about and that students are at the center of all we do in the budget. So what this is visually showing us is that we take some time, if you look to the top of the, of this circle, to establish some baseline data. That's what we've been doing through the fall, looking at our enrollment projections, reviewing our actual enrollment from last year. We've been closing the books from fiscal year nineteen and putting those, that actual data into the budget to see what happens. Then we can start to surface potential options for next year's budget and that's the period we're in right now. And tonight's presentation will foreshadow some of the things we're thinking about for next year. Then between March and June, the board is asked to make a final decision on next year's budget and then we implement the budget, we refine it, and then always we're continuously improving. And these aren't necessarily sequential, but it's just to show us that the budget is always a moving process, that we're always thinking about what's best for students. These are some of the preliminary budget assumptions that we're thinking about for fiscal twenty-one. The document that's in the board packet shows a similar layout for this current year's budget. We're right now thinking that we will have an estimated enrollment of four thousand six hundred and forty-three students in grade K through twelve. Three hundred and seventy of those are kindergarteners. And that's a slight increase in enrollment from this year, based on a three-year trend of student enrollment. We are continuing moving forward with our staffing based on our current class size guidelines, which means we aren't increasing our budget or decreasing our budget. That our guidelines for the size of our individual classrooms will remain intact. We aren't planning changes to district fees, which includes food service, lunch or breakfast prices, which is outside of the general fund. We have a two percent increase in the state general education funding formula, which is already built in to state law. And barring any unforeseen changes in that amount for next year, this is not a funding year at the state legislature in Minnesota. So we think the two percent funding increase will be accurate and that we will maintain as per board policy, a minimum, a minimum general fund balance of six percent. So those assumptions are in place. We talked a little bit with the board about the idea of setting aside from some contingency for next fall to guard against costs that might come up as a result of start time changes. There might be unforeseen things that we need to attend to and that we should build a contingency into the budget for that. And when, when we come back to the board to establish our final budget amounts in March, we'll have more details on that. The five-year financial model has been updated to reflect our fiscal year two thousand nineteen results. We have a model that we use with Finance Advisory Committee. And what happens is current year dollars are used with some assumptions in the model to look out five years into the future and to start to foresee when we might need to make budget cuts or when we might be able to increase our expenditures. And so we have updated the model. We will update it again with our mid-year budget update in March. So we'll be asking the board in March to update the nineteen-twenty budget. And then we will update the model and see what the future, if it changes any of our thinking about the future. And then when the board finally adopts the next year budget in June, we will make one final update for this fiscal year to the five-year financial model. But currently we're recommending based upon our assumptions in the model, I can comfortably recommend that we do not make budget cuts for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one as we're doing the planning, also that we're not increasing any assumptions in the budget other than those that we've talked about. So that's our current recommendation. So here's our next steps. There's a few times we'll be with the board, but in the meantime, on February twenty-fourth, the Finance Advisory Committee will bring a presentation to the school board as per their normal procedure. And then action items for the board, on March twenty-third, we'll be asking you to approve our budget proposal for fiscal year twenty-one. We like to do that early in the year so that we can continue with our staffing processes and start to purchase things that will need advance, advanced timelines to arrive in time for the school year to start. And then on June twenty-second, probably after a work session earlier that month, we'll ask the board to approve the final detailed fiscal year twenty-one budget. That's what I have for you tonight and in a form of an update so you know where we're at in our planning process.
Thank you, Patricia. Question, Anne?
Thank you. I just wanted to say this is great. And if, if people don't know, this, part of this kind of budget process has been in, in, in part due to the strategic plans.
Right.
And I just wanted to pull up the, strategy number two of our strategic plan specifically says, we will align our structures and systems to our core values. And that's part of what this process is really, thinking about budgets as documents that, that align to our values. So in that, I think the first slide you showed, you had the whole process wrapping around the goal of student learning and partly, part of the process is designed to increase the opportunities for stakeholder input. And then obviously maintaining the overall financial health of the district in order for us to do the work that we're doing. So thank you. I think that that has been, this has been, I mean, it's been part of the strategic plan for the last five years and, and here we are seeing the fruits of it. It's fantastic, so thank you.
Anne, this is wonderful. Really appreciate how succinct and focused you are on this. And Patricia, if you could just say a little bit more about how you recruited to expand the input of the FAC? Because it now is more reflective of our community and, and you put a lot of time and attention into that. If you'd be so kind, just to a little update on that.
Yeah, we're very fortunate to have about fifteen members of our community staff and a couple of students who are serving on the Finance Advisory Committee. And by the way, if anyone's interested in this work, you don't need a background in this work. You just need to be able to come and listen and give input. And so we meet about six times a year. And so we do have a really robust Finance Advisory Committee, but I would be happy, we would be happy to take other applicants and other members who would want to join in the work. They have had an influence on the work that we're doing and it's, it's a really important group so that I can come to the board, have and taking, take an input from community members, from some students and some staff members.
I, I just wanted to say two things. I seem to like to do things in series here. But I want to say thank you as a new school board member. Me and some of my fellow colleagues got a kind of a crash course in this and learned that it's extremely complex. People think that there's just one general source of money that we pull from and that we can use and it's way more complex and funding formulas and things that really are around enrollment and things like that. And so it's really like to sit here and play with these numbers and think about these things and make projections and help make sure that we're building a healthy school district that can teach all of our students. It's really impressive and I really appreciate your hard work, your staff, the people on the Finance Advisory Committee, everybody who provides input into it because it really just sets a great foundation for what we have going here. And I think my second point was going to be about something related, oh, and it was enrollment and seeing those enrollment numbers and seeing those increased enrollment numbers is also very encouraging. And I know things can change on a dime, but I think, again, we've had some really strong things in our community in terms of what we're doing here, some excellent marketing, some great things that just remind people how great our schools are. So it's really nice to see those numbers going up too.
Thanks, Patricia.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, policy development. First reading of policy seven, staff participation in political activities.
So for policy four thirty-seven, staff participation in political activities, this is not an MSB required policy, so there are no MSB suggestions. We made some updates more so to the flow of the policy so that it's a little bit more clear as to, you know, what a staff member would need to do if they are participating in political activities, very specifically related to any impact that would have on their work schedule and not bringing campaigning activities to work when they're on duty.
Um, one question that I had about this is- Okay, my question is whether maybe we clarify in that first paragraph, for example, because I'm, I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this applies to staff members-
Or to a candidate on behalf of another candidate?
Any candidate? No, it doesn't apply to that. It only applies if they are campaigning as a candidate.
We, we must have Bluetooth because my, my, my one question for the board was, the way I read the policy, it expressly talks about the individual staff member who is campaigning on behalf of themselves. I would ask the question, does the board have any desire to have the policy talk about if the person was campaigning on behalf of another? Just, I could be the campaign manager for someone else and it could take up just as much of my duty day. But, but this policy doesn't talk about that. Now, normal work process about being on task and doing work at work would, that, but this policy only addresses if I am running as a candidate myself.
Do we have any like procedures in the employee handbook or anything like that that would be related to that, the second part of what you're saying? The part about if you're, if it was on behalf of a, of another candidate that is not covered by this current language?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't have it called out specifically that thou shalt not campaign on behalf of others, but it would be more in the, you know, you should be at work on time. You should be, you know, you know, at your appointed spot, doing the things you're supposed to be doing. But it, it, it wouldn't say, and you can't do this and you can't do this and you can't buy shoes online and you can't do, you know, you know, all the, all the things that could also be distracting while people are at work.
I may be reading too much into this, but if I were a staff member, I would actually think that this does apply, like if I wanted to campaign for president or if I want, meaning not me personally, but if I am volunteering for a campaign, I call that campaigning as well. And so when I'm reading this, I would think it would apply to me if I was going to be the campaign manager for a city council member or if I were going to be the campaign manager or even just to volunteer, campaigning for one of our state representatives. So I, I would like for us to know whether we think that we wanted to read that right or whether we could clarify campaigning as, as candidates for an elected public office. I think that's all we might need to do to satisfy my confusion, but just to add that campaigning as a candidate.
One of my questions is, is this somehow covered already in something in terms of like use of public equipment for campaigning or things like that that would be like state law or something? Is it really that we need explicitly to have a policy like this?
I don't know why we have a policy like this. But given that we have a policy like this, I would ask the question, do you want it to explicitly apply to both whether you're campaigning on behalf of yourself or campaigning, you know, for another?
So if what you're saying is that the activities that are sort of called out here are, while not specifically listed in like the employee handbook, are generally prohibited by other conditions in the, in the employee handbook?
For example, you know, if I have a side job and I'm, I'm, I make things in my home and I, you know, I can't be running around the school selling my wares when I'm supposed to be teaching third graders, you know. So there's, you know, there's general, you have to be on task when you're at work. That would go, but there, the, the litany of things that you couldn't do while you're at work, when you're supposed to be working would be too long to write.
Yeah, I get that. I'm, so I'm, like, my question is why, why do we have a policy on something that is already-
It applies to one of those, right? And so, yeah, so.
So, and, and action could be we remove the policy and, and just stop. I mean, we haven't looked at it since nineteen ninety-four, so. This is near I graduated high school. So I just think as we seek to have policy governance take care of what we're actually in the business of doing, this isn't necessary.
Tom?
It would seem like some of this would just be gentle reminders during campaign seasons too, that we can just remind people about proper, proper activity within schools or things like that might be just a more in line with just reminding people about things and, and encouraging people to engage in whatever ways that they think are appropriate.
Maybe, or not. Expecting people jobs and as long as they do their jobs, what they're doing outside of their jobs is. So if we were to make a motion to just remove a policy, does anybody know if we need to actually second reading or if we can take that action tonight and avoid having to put the agenda in two weeks? Okay, so.
So I could make a proposal that we eliminate this policy and that that would be, I'm sorry.
I could make a recommendation that we seek to remove this policy and we would take action at that question at our second reading at our next meeting.
I was going to say, yeah, if we're going to remove the policy, and I'm not against it as your person who's ultimately going to have to defend the district in any, you know, employment action. But, you know, I, I would want it to be with the forethought that we're removing it, not, I mean, if you just remove it and say nothing, it'll seem like, oh, it's okay now. So if we take away the policy, we, you know, should put in place that, you know, we affirm that it's important to work at work and that, you know, the school district administration and supervisors shall remind people at or about, you know, you know, you know, intervals of elections that, you know, it's, you know, it's important that they maintain a neutral position and all of the things we talk about, you know, that are important for professionals around election season. But, you know, and then we would just carry that out as a general reminder that it's election season again and work at work.
So hearing that recommendation, I would like to propose at our next meeting, we incorporate what Director Cryer has advised us to, related to general reminders about when you're at work, you work, but when it's time to be involved with civic engagement, you do so appropriately on your own time and dime. But that we would seek to remove this policy in official action at our next meeting.
Any other comments? Thanks. Okay, next up, policy development, second reading, policy six forty, acceleration of students.
For policy six forty, there were no additional changes made to the language of the policy itself. We did include in your materials the procedure outlining some of the proposed changes that we spoke about at the last school board meeting.
And I'll just say that as a reminder, actually before, I know we discussed the procedures last time a little bit, but in general, we could discuss and advise, but we are not responsible for approving procedures. That is the superintendent and his cabinet's role. So really, when we are looking at this policy, we are solely focused in terms of our approval or revision with just that first paragraph, just that single paragraph of the policy. And I think that we had a couple of questions about this policy last time and I'm wondering if we have, if we want to revisit those. One was the discussion of whether there are other districts who have a policy like this. And I believe that Dr. Duffy shared with us that he was not aware that many do. We also discussed how we have a disproportionately large number of six- We also discussed how we have a disproportionately large number of 600 series policies relative to other school districts around us. 600 policies are those groups of policies that apply to students, specifically instructional policies, thank you. And so I think that this was a policy, again, that we were discussing whether was necessary. Does anybody have any other thoughts on the superintendent's side? Did you have anything further?
Chair Tombak, I'm wondering if it would make sense either as a full board or as a, a committee of the board to take some time and really look at the 600 series policies and be able to make a recommendation to the board regarding next action. As you'll notice, this was not put on the action agenda for any action this evening, just recognizing that I think that this is a larger conversation that we need to have around our 600 series policies.
I agree, and I was looking at, I pulled up, I was like, there's some related things, right? There's programs for gifted students, which is its own separate policy that has only four lines as well. And then in addition, we have a totally separate policy for early kindergarten admissions, which is a form of acceleration that's not even in the 600 series, it's in a totally different place. So there's not even one place where we're storing all this information. So I do think that that is a great suggestion to kind of pull together a more comprehensive look at, at all these 600 and related policies.
In regards to this specific policy, and I guess the 600 series also is, and I'm speaking from a teacher perspective right now, it's long and maybe it's clunky, but I'm looking at it from, it's, it at least gives a somewhat objective place to start because there are families that may feel that their student is able to accelerate, but perhaps they aren't. And instead of it being a subjective, either the teacher says it, or the principal, or whatever, there's at least a process to follow that, you know, that you can then go back to the family and say, this is what we follow through with. You know, when you have students that are wanting to accelerate or that are able to, it is a lot of work for the teacher to do, and not that that's not their job, because it is, but it does help to have some guidelines of what it should look like and who is going to support in those roles.
Can procedures exist absent of, I'm sorry, did I just take the words out of your mouth?
That's exactly what I was going to say. So other districts that don't have specific policies certainly have guidelines or procedures that govern exactly what you're describing. So there, there's a clearly articulated process for staff and for families to follow when they have desire to accelerate their child. So you wouldn't necess, because as we look at the policy language, the policy language doesn't describe all of the things that you're talking about that actually occurs in the procedure, which we could have those without a policy.
Right, so the issue with respect to this... Which arguably don't say much of anything.
I really appreciate what Ann had to say, that it's time to do a deeper dive on the whole series and whether we tackle it as a full board or if we have a non-quorum interested committee, either one works for me. But as we look at those policies, really think about our role in terms of policy and systems and structures that are designed to frankly replicate embedded systemic racism. So having a deep, and I'm really appreciating the book we're reading, How to Be an Anti-Racist, and we have an obligation to do that as we review policy, and this is the perfect time to take a really deep dive into it.
We could also, I mean, I think I... For the sake of what we are doing here and our, our goal and our job, I can't possibly imagine where it would apply more than our instructional policies. And if we can't start to look at those through a real lens of equity and anti-racism, then I, I don't think that we would be doing our jobs.
One thing that I'm aware of too, obviously, is that we're looking at a new strategic plan and thinking about these policies, seems like we want to be careful that whatever we put into policy doesn't pigeonhole us, keep us from implementing things in our new strategic plan. So I'm, I'm curious about timing, that we may have to think about that in terms of what's the best timing? Should we do our strategic plan and draw, and have that drive some of where this goes? Or if, if we want to think more about creating more general policy so that we have a, that we have that capability with our strategic plan to go in the directions that we intend to go?
That's a good thought. Okay, so I think more to come on this, and, but I appreciate very much that it certainly seems like we have some momentum among the seven of us to dig deeper into this, and that's great. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, is there anything that anybody would move to pull from the consent agenda? Pull off the consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Second to Laura, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes seven zero.
The action agenda, I believe that we actually need a motion to amend the agenda. The bid award approval should be amended to read, it is recommended that the school board approve the bid awards for Susan Lindgren Elementary and Peter Hobart Elementary Construction Projects as presented. Is there a motion to, or I have moved to make that amendment, is there a second? Seconded by Ann, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes seven zero. So is there a motion to approve the bid awards for Susan Lindgren Elementary and Peter Hobart Elementary Construction Projects as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Colin?
Second.
Second by Ken, all in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Well, other than to continue to thank Tom, who's left, for his hard work and his team guests, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes seven zero. All right, communications and transmittals.
Just want to highlight a really exciting event coming up on Thursday, the 30th. The international skate is taking place with our fifth through eighth graders at the Roller Garden. There will be music in ten different languages. It goes from six to eight, there's a six dollar fee at the door, but if you need help with that, there's a way around that, so reach out to your fifth grade teacher or your language teacher at the middle school. So hope to see a whole lot of kids there, it's a, it's a fun event.
So I went to the SLP Foundation Board meeting, and on the 15th, we talked a lot about, they did, they were happy with fundraising for last year, they're continuing to talk about how to build a strong donor base that they can kind of rely on year to year. March 15th, there's going to be an event at Steel Tolo, Susan Lindgren event to raise money for the board. And then February is when the grant applications will go out for teachers, and Grant Share Date is scheduled for April 15th. Oh, and they get, the Grant Shares, they fund the grants for teachers to do innovative and just things sort of beyond the curriculum in their classroom or with students. So that's what the money goes towards. Yeah.
It's been a busy week here, a couple of weeks here and stuff, and a couple of, a few of the things that I've been able to participate in, one, I, I got the opportunity to go to Peter Hobart and get a tour from the principal and walk around the, the building. And I think as much as I feel connected to education, it's interesting to actually be in the building and see instruction going on and being a part of before and after school. And I was really amazed by what I was seeing, walking into these classrooms and just seeing the instruction going on, and that was just really empowering to see that in, in a facility that I'm less familiar with and with our district, so really great. And then later that evening, I returned to Peter Hobart after I went home for some dinner, and then I went to the PTO meeting, and again, a nice opportunity to hear about some really great things that are going on at Peter Hobart. And a couple of things I would highlight is the presentation that they did about math and the way that they did an interactive opportunity for us to talk about how they're teaching math at the, at the grade school, and really shows again how, maybe we make some assumptions about what's going on in a classroom, and to see that they're really thinking about how different people come and approach different things like math and simply by just showing dots on a screen and how we all look at the dots in a different way. So really great presentation. They talked about some other great things that they're doing there, but I'll save those for, for some other time. But I also want to promote the Jungle Book that they're doing there as part of the Hennepin Theater Trust funding that they got and that Susan Lindgren got, that I think was in part motivated by some of what we saw with the school foundation doing when they supported Aquila's musical program and what we continue to see around our district. And so the things that they're doing around that are really exciting. And then the final thing, or another thing I wanted to point out was that I participated, again, with Ann here, we attended the, the Heart of the Matter discussion about a, about the primary that was put on by our community ed, and it was another great opportunity for us to hear about, about an event coming up that is kind of new and interesting and different for us, and thinking about the presidential primary, and they had a few really excellent speakers there talking from the Secretary of State's office, from the city of St. Louis Park, and from the League of Women Voters, really trying to explain all the things, answer all the questions. It was really interesting to just hear and be able to have that opportunity to ask all those questions and get clear information, and for people who are watching at home, there are great resources, I think, on both the Secretary of State's website and the city website about what to, what to understand about that new process. Then the final thing I was going to mention was participating in the city of St. Louis Park, is looking at our table, our table, our cable charter and some opportunities there. And I think it's really important because I think that's how some people connect with us, is by watching us on the cable channels, on those community channels, and if you really appreciate that and have opinions about that, then you need to find out a little bit more and look into this thing, because we might take some of that for granted. It isn't that we automatically get to show up on cable like we do, or that we have the channels that we do, or that that will automatically renew. So if that's something that really is, is important to you and you like some of the resources that we have in our community, great ways to stay connected, not only with the school board, but with the city council, and even seeing the things like watching the school plays, watching the band performances, watching the sports activities, you really should look into this and make sure that your, your voice is heard about that. And so I would go to the city website to do that.
The legislative session starts February 11th, and AMSD, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, is holding its legislative preview a week from Friday, Friday, February 7th. And the Commissioner Ricker from MDE and Representative Joakim, Representative Sonder Erickson, Senator Carla Nelson, and Senator Chuck Weiger will all be appearing to talk about what's going to be ahead in their education committees in both the House and the Senate. So it's going to be super informative, and I'll make sure to take notes and bring them back here for anyone. I know that's a 7:30 a.m. meeting in Little Canada, it's hard for people to, to get to, but I will, I will certainly bring notes back, and I know. And I believe our superintendent is part of a presentation at, at that event as well.
I'll be there, just to cheer on Aston and keep company. I still, I really like the joke that Little Canada is almost as far away as actual Canada.
It's true, especially at 7 a.m.
Yes, very true. Okay, well, if there's nothing else, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Colin?
Second.
Second by Heather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Good night.